It started. Good evening. Welcome to this Thursday, March 27th, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting. All our meeting to order. May I have an approval of our agenda for this evening?
I'm moved.
Seconded.
There's a second. Quick discussion. We have a new, I won't say member, but counsel at our table this evening. Steve, do you want to introduce?
Sure, sure. We have Melissa Ryan who's sitting in. We've often have our city attorneys, has Bill and Bill Kabeizman and Kerry Richter. And Melissa Ryan is new to Bateman and Seidel. And Melissa served as a member, a board member of the Land Use Board of Appeals, Luba, for over 18 years. And during that time, Melissa collaboratively resolved thousands of appeals of land use decisions by local governments and state agencies within the short period prescribed by law with many appeals involving complex issues and multiple parties, which I think we're all familiar with. Prior to being appointed to Luba, Melissa spent eight years in private practice representing private clients in local land use permitting processes and at Luba, and public clients in real estate deposition and leasing, and represented lenders in real estate finance transactions. So just would like to welcome Melissa and thank you for helping us out.
Welcome. Yeah, glad to have you here with us. You mentioned we have a little different technical orientation tonight. This might be a good point to add that.
Yep, yep. So there's probably some people out there. Right now, we're having some technical difficulties with our computer system. So if there is, the Zoom is working perfectly fine. So anyone who's participating, just feel free to put up your hands when it's time. But anyone who is listening to YouTube or anyone on Zoom who knows who's listening to YouTube, that is not live streaming. So it would be good if they checked our website to find out how to get to the Zoom link and participate on Zoom.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so we have a couple of little things we added to our agenda. Is there any further discussion about our agenda for this evening? All right. Tessa, will you call the role to approve the agendas?
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Matusic?
Do we have Commissioner Matusic tonight?
That might be who that is. He's on my phone.
Commissioner Matusic?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Orloff?
Yes.
Chair Newton.
Yes. Our agenda is approved. Okay, we'll move on to the consideration of our minutes from the January 23rd, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Are there any amendments to the minutes? If there are no amendments, may I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Any further discussion? Tessa, will you call the role, please?
Commissioner Bates?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Matusic?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Orloff?
Yes.
Chair Newton.
Yes. Okay, we're gonna, well, actually, you know what? I'm gonna put one little thing in here at the public comment section. I probably should have said at the agenda. The Cannon Beach has a bulletin for those of you out there in the virtual world or in the room tonight. If you're looking to keep up on, I'm gonna make this as salesy as I can. If you're looking to keep up on the exciting world of Cannon Beach, you can't do a better job than the Cannon Beach Community Bulletin. I have heard, more seriously, I have heard a number of people say that they feel like they can't keep up, or they're unable to figure out what's going on with the city. This is a great new program the city's put in place. Nancy McCarthy, who is a, I believe, award-winning journalist, is heading it up. I've read some of the articles. They're very well-written, right up the middle. So, you know, here's a one that might be somewhat controversial. New options for NICA that school. Some ideas in this bulletin about what's being considered. If you are interested in that, it'd be a great time to get on the city's website. Go up under, I believe it's under Community, and the Community tab, and then you can go under Community Bulletin and find out more. Looking to be a lifeguard in Cannon Beach? Well, this is where you'd go. Cannon Beach is hiring lifeguards. All kinds of other interesting things to say. Again, on the city's website, be sure to look, and then you'll never be out of the know as to what's going on in the exciting city of Cannon Beach.
That's his incredible job on that.
Yeah, no, very, very.
He's really good. So, who does to her?
Yeah, really, really excited for people to be able to, and you can sign up and have it delivered to you. So I'm gonna, for a while, I'm just gonna keep bringing this up. So people have all kinds of an opportunity to keep up with what's going on here. All right, so that moves us somewhat gracefully into public comment. At this time, I'll call for public comment. If you have something you believe is within the purview of the Cannon Beach Planning Commission, is something we should think about for changing the way planning is done, please come forward at this time. We ask you to keep your comments to three minutes, and again, within the purview of the Cannon Beach Planning Commission. Is there anyone who'd like to make public comment at this time?
Is it regarding any of this?
When you say this is the...
This is the application.
No, there'll be an opportunity there for that, sir.
Yeah, we have a hand raised on the line. I think it's also somebody that wants to talk about the application.
Okay. If your hand is raised because you're here tonight to speak about the application before us, you will have an opportunity to speak to that in just a few minutes. This is a more general opportunity for people to speak about broad issues before the Planning Commission. Is the hand still raised?
It's, no, it's down.
Okay, great. All right, so we will move to our next item. It's a quasi-judicial hearing regarding CU, Conditional Use 2501 Ray Miller, a conditional use application for a residential build in a wetland buffer area. CU 2501 Ray Miller applicant for a conditional use permit for residential construction in an inventoried wetland buffer area. The project is located at 415, the street I might struggle with, Chillicooke Trail Road, and is in the residential lower density RL zone district. The applicant will be, the application will be reviewed against the criteria of Municipal Code 17.102 Wetland Overlay Zone and 17.86 Conditional Use. Does any one object to the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission to hear this matter at this time? Online? Does any commission member believe he or she has a conflict of interest or personal bias? Has any commission member had any ex parte contacts or made a site visit?
Site visit?
Okay. May we have the staff report, please?
Good evening. This application is for the construction of a single-family dwelling within a 50-foot wetland buffer area. The proposed dwelling will replace a single-family dwelling that was demolished in 2022 due to its condition. The Cannon Beach Municipal Code requires that development activities such as residential development, stormwater management, et cetera, within the wetland overlay zone require review and approval by the Planning Commission. Moving into the wetland overlay zone requirements, the proposed location for the new dwelling is within the 50-foot buffer area of an inventoried wetland. However, no work is proposed in the wetland itself. Based on the delineation included in Exhibit A2, there is no significant portion of the lot that is outside of the buffer area. However, there is a significant vertical separation between the proposed building site, which is the same location as the previous dwelling, and the delineated wetland. Regarding development standards, the staff comment is that the proposed dwelling will have a footprint of approximately 840 square feet with an attached deck measuring approximately 340 square feet. Wall street parking area will be provided, making for a total lot coverage of 1,350 square feet. The dwelling will be constructed on vertical piers that will maximize the amount of excavation, or minimize the amount of excavation needed to accommodate construction. Westbrook Science and Design Report included as Exhibit A2 details the following avoidance and impact minimization measures. One, the applicant has selected a floor plan with a small footprint. A larger home would require more area in its construction. Two, the house will be constructed within the disturbance area created by the home that was removed in 2022. No new areas will be disturbed for permanent construction. No native trees or other vegetation will be removed during construction activities. Three, the proposed dwelling will be constructed on piers which will allow vegetation to reestablish underneath the footprint of the house. Four, the proposed dwelling will be located closer to Chillicooke Trail than the previous dwelling, allowing for the buffer to be wider than it was historically. And five, the remaining areas of temporary disturbance will be replanted with native shrubs and herbaceous vegetation. Moving into the development standards for stormwater management, the comment is that the Exhibit A7 details stormwater management planning and mitigation measures that will take place in conjunction with the development. As no municipal stormwater infrastructure exists on Chillicooke Trail Road, onsite management will be required. This will consist of a stormwater infiltration trench placed west of the house that will be filled with drain rock and direct stormwater from the driveway and roof gutters and directed toward the wetland area. Sedimentation control fencing will be placed between the dwelling and the mapped wetland area during construction. After construction, a variety of plants detailed in Exhibit A2 will provide vegetative erosion control and serve as a natural filler for runoff on the sloped portion of the property. Moving into the conditional use standards, the staff comment is that the subject property is zoned residential lower density RL, and a single-family dwelling is permitted use in that zone. Chillicooke Trail Road is residential in nature, and the subject property was previously developed with a single-family dwelling. The proposed development is small in scale and will not generate a significant amount of traffic or demand on public infrastructure. And that concludes the staff report.
Thank you. Has there been any additional correspondence that's come in since?
No.
Okay, at this time, we'll call for public testimony. Certain criteria to be considered are noted in the staff reports and listed on the paper sheets on the city's meeting page of the city's website. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward those criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or municipal code which the person testifying believes applies to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to affect decision-makers and parties and opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal based on that issue. Prior to conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional testimony, arguments, or evidence regarding the application. Planning Commission should grant such requests by continuing the public hearing or leaving the record open for additional written testimony, arguments, or evidence. Persons who testify shall first receive recognition from the chair, state their full name and mailing address, and if appearing in a representative capacity, identify whom they represent. Is there a presentation by the applicant? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Ray Miller. Glad to be here.
Could you give us your name?
Ray Miller. Thank you very much. 15750 58th Street Court East in somewhere in Washington.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm very glad to be here. It's been a long journey to be here. I purchased the land in August of 2022, and to be modeled. So I had it torn down in September of 2022. My interest in the land was to keep it as pristine as possible. I love the land. It's absolutely stunning. My kids, my children are upcoming to Cannon Beach. Now I have three grandchildren, and so my hope is that they'll be able to also come to Cannon Beach, and we can continue the family tradition. And so when I learned of the change in the records of my office, that was very discouraging. And yet, I was encouraged to go ahead and do all the necessary surveys, et cetera. And I currently have about $450,000 into the land. And so I'm hoping, I'm very much hoping that it will be approved based on all the professionals that I've hired and who have done excellent work to give their input so that this land can be developed with this small home that meets the requirements of the 1,000 square feet for Cannon Beach, but will do very minimal, very minimal damage to the land, which is my goal. Very love the land. All I have to say online, thank you very much for listening.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
Hey, just to let you know what I might bring up during the discussion, and maybe you have some thoughts. Part of our new code does require a mitigation plan for disturbed buffer areas. Notice you have a wetland delineation, and it has a discussion of replanting areas that have been disturbed. But mitigation plan should address mitigation of an area that is a footprint of what is being placed in the buffer zone. Seeing that, this particular report, typically that would include, you know, discussing, well, there's this much area can be replanted with natives, or maybe you're gonna remove some invasives in that area, et cetera. Have you had a conversation like that with your wetland specialist about a more detailed mitigation?
Yeah, Anita Smith from Westbrook Science and Design. She wrote a fairly extensive summary for the mitigation plan, I guess.
But we have here in the record, doesn't have that much detail.
Really? Okay, because she talked about removing species. She talked about species in the land, which I felt whenever the summary was adequate in terms of the species that she specified to be replanted.
The disturbed areas?
Okay.
Typically, mitigation would mean that you are actually trying to improve the buffer zone in another area on the lot that is equivalent in area to what is being covered by the building. So that might mean saying, well, we can find 100 square feet somewhere else, and here's the suggested area that would be appropriate to replant, et cetera. So it's not just what has been disturbed by your construction, but actually improving the buffer in another part of your lot. Have you had a conversation like that?
No, I have not. And based on what the property looks like right now, the area that where the old home was, so that's fairly open. There was a lot of vegetation under the home. And so from there on, all the natural vegetation is in there. I mean, my goal was to leave everything except for where the home's gonna go, just natural, the way it was, let's say, when I purchased it, right? Make improvements on what already was, except for where the home was standing. If that's something I need to do, I have not thought about that. No one mentioned that in terms of needing to add, you know, additional improvements anywhere other than where the home was gonna be placed and where the disturbance was by the previous home. So I haven't heard any, you know, any prior to tonight. That's something I'm sure if I contacted Anita, she would be able to give extensive input around that. She's, you know, she's very good at all that, you know, creating good vegetation and making everything as good as possible in the land and all of that. So I'm happy to contact her.
And I realize this is one of the first applications that's come through on this new code. So everyone's figuring out how to work with it. And this mitigation requirement is much more substantial than under the previous code. So if you're working with someone who helped other landowners before the revision, it may not have been a necessity, but now we've added this more involved mitigation process. So I was just curious if that conversation happened.
It's pretty heavily vegetated, except for where the old home was.
Yeah, there is. It looks like there might be some Himalayan blackberry there. So that's a potential for mitigation.
Putting that out.
Yeah. That might be something that would be in the mitigation plan.
Okay. Yeah. No, I'm very happy to contact Anita again and get additional information or input from her if necessary.
I had a question. It's just come to me. When did you, when did you have the house demolished?
September of 2020.
One month after we...
Purchased, and yeah. It was, I mean, it was a hazard. In fact, when I called on the land the first time, the Realtor that was listing it, she said, don't go under the house.
I can vouch for you on that. I lived here for two months.
Oh, wow. I mean, it was a lovely home. It's just really sad that it was let go.
It was 60-mile power window. It was very scary to be...
Oh, oh, well, yeah.
It would be the right choice.
Okay, good. No, yeah. I mean, I loved the third floor, you know, up there. But the reason I'm only building a two-story is because I want to mitigate any impact on the land. A two-story, it seems like less impact on the land.
One of... Well, I'll tell you what's on my mind, and I'm, let's see, this may be the first opportunity for you, counsel, to say a little bit here. I want to make sure that things that are of concern to me, the applicant has an opportunity to address. And I know this is on my mind. The gap between the decision to demolish the house and our new zoning code, or updates to our, not our new zoning code, are updates to the wetland provision. There is potentially some overlap there, and the decisions, decisions may have been done differently had some of the applicant known about this coming down. I'm concerned about that, and want to make sure there's an opportunity to address it before we close the record, and there's no opportunity to talk about it. I don't know that I've phrased that as clearly as I could have. I'm still kind of processing it as I think about this. Do you kind of see my conundrum there with... I don't want to lead in any way, but it is something I'm thinking about.
I mean, tip, you know, under the law, the date of the application is the date that freezes the standards that apply to the application in place. And so I, you know, was not with Bateman Seidel when the new wetland overlay was adopted, but I'm presuming that there was the requisite notice, ballot measure 56 notice and all of that. And so everyone had their notice that this was happening. And it's also usually a really long process, which I imagine it was.
I can attest to that, yes.
So I mean, that's kind of what I can say to that, is that the goal of school works really well because it applies uniformly throughout the state.
Okay, good. That answers the question. Are there other questions for the applicant? Anybody online? Okay, thank you very much. You'll have another opportunity to speak if you'd like to. Are there additional presentations by, do you have anyone else as a part of your team that's gonna be presenting tonight? No? Okay. Are there additional presentations by proponents, people in favor of this project?
I'd like to say something if I could.
As a proponent?
Well, just as a comment, I own the property right down the street.
Yes, please come forward.
My name is Gary Smith. I own property at 264 Chillicooke Trail. I'd like to thank Ray. I've never met you. All the other, but I haven't met you. For tearing down the horrible place that was there, it was, it was an asset to the neighborhood to have it gone. In light of that, I have no problem with her building a new house there. I think it's a great idea. My only concern, when I walked up there and looked at the property after it was all torn down, and I think in the, in the, there's three of those great big, huge Douglas fir trees there that are marked with, assuming those trees aren't gonna be removed. That would open our neighborhood up to Highway 101 big time. That's my only concern with that area, affected now by those tree buffer that binds the highway. It would be a shame to see. And I think if she's gonna go back in the same footprint, basically, as we're there, take those trees out. My other concern, strictly my concern because I'm the one that takes care of it, Chillicooke Trail goes from Hemlock Street up to the end of my property. I guess who gets to take care of Chillicooke Trail? Me. That, I haven't repaid twice. I take care of the weeds and then all the stuff that goes with it. And if we're gonna do a big, not a big construction project, I would just like it to be mindful that the city or somebody watch out for any road damage, asphalt damage, you know, and for heavy equipment. That road was never designed for heavy truck traffic or heavy construction equipment. So if it does get damaged, I would like to not be on the hook to fix it. My only concerns. I think she'd do a great job out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. As there's no one else in the room, I'm gonna assume we're probably okay to go online. Are there people online who have, is there any proponent online?
We have a hand.
All right, okay. So if you're a proponent of this project and your hand is up, my eyes aren't as good as these. Mr. Sider, if you would like to state your name and address, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Robert Tad Cedar, and my street address is P.O. Box 89 Tollavanna Park, but I live right across the street from the subject property. I've met Ms. Miller. Hi, Ms. Miller. And I echo everything what Gary, everything that Gary said is absolutely true. We have, one of the reasons we bought the property several years ago was the sound of the ocean, which is wonderful. But when traffic is heavy on 101, we get drowned out by that. And that's, that's our problem. But if those trees are gonna be cut down, that's gonna be a more serious problem. So if those, I believe it was stated earlier, no native trees will be removed, in which case I think we're, we're all good. That's great. And it was an eyesore. It was a hazard. It had lots of rats in it, and it's good that it's gone. We're delighted to have a new neighbor. Second point that Gary, Mr. Smith made is an excellent one. The tax lot map that I have in the materials that are online show at Figure 2, Chillicooke Trail basically goes straight up to Highway 1. So it's marked Old Oregon Coast Highway. That's actually Hemlock, right before the S-curve there. And Chillicooke Trail goes in a straight line on, on Figure 2 to 26, or to 101. And that's not the way it goes. The road goes straight past Gary's house, past the corner of my house, the driveway, and then it curves around. I believe it becomes an easement at that point to the front of Ms. Miller's house property, and then the next property, which is owned by the folks who own the Mariner Market, or actually, most recently sold the Mariner Market, Andy Cho and his folks. And we do not get a street sweeper up Chillicooke Trail. The brush is not cut back on Chillicooke Trail, and any maintenance that occurs on Chillicooke Trail is done by Gary. And I'm, I attempted a system, but I'm not very good at it. So I think long-term, with additional folks living up the street, it would be much appreciated if the city would be able to cut the brush back for sightlines, cut the brush back to let folks know when our elk friends are in the vicinity. And we had a dog attack recently in Gary's yard by one of the elk. And it's, my wife does not feel safe walking her dogs down towards Hemlock due to the possible danger of encountering elk. And so I think we need to respectfully submit that we need better maintenance on the street, but that's my only other comment. And we're delighted to have Ray's project move forward. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Cedar? No online? Okay. We'll close then to proponents. We'll move to opponents. Is there anyone online, as there's no one in the room left, who is opposed to this project? Okay. No one online, Robert, just to be clear? Staff response, anything you've heard? No, no. As the applicant, you were afforded the opportunity to speak again if you'd like, or if you're satisfied, we'll close the record and move to our... Great, thank you. With that in mind, then, we will close the public testimony portion of our meeting and move to our deliberation. Would you like to start?
I'd like to talk about, Nikki brought up, is the mitigation. On two sections, 1710268 and 171027J, where H1217, 268 calls out some wetland area, by a section 263, for mitigation plan, shall be... Wetland mitigation, wetland enhancement, except for wetland buffer averaging in subsections two, which is not a fault. It's all projects involving and wetland buffer must provide a wetland mitigation and or wetland enhancement. That means following standards, standards listed. This is a big thing to me because it, it lays out, as Mickey said, mitigation, um, function values assessment, which takes into consideration higher logical water quality support, habitat, aquatic habitats, um, and even goes to the extent of the ecosystem, song, where raptor aquatic inverted ray water cooling native plant inventory. Um, it's a big chunk of this is unfortunately missing. Uh, I'm all for the project. I think it's a great project. I think I commend you on doing what you've done, but I think that one section is going to hold me up on this and not have any.
Okay. Other comments?
Okay, Jay.
There are a couple other things that I see there are missing. Seventeen one oh two sixty E requires a site analysis, alternate analysis plan. I don't see this as a big deal because there's really no other place to put them.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, seventeen one oh two sixty F requires a landscape plan, uh, that notes, um, uh, this plants that are already there, such as the trees, which they do have listed. They also have, uh, language talking about replanting, but we don't have a defined replanting um, that a planning will provide. Um, so we don't know. And that goes, sort of goes in, in the extent of mitigation as well. I don't think the tree hazard report would be in our privy because that's more buildings. So I'm not going to touch that. Um, seventeen one oh two seventy C, oh, uh, I'm sorry, C four was also wetland buffer encroachment mitigation. So the mitigation is just a sort of a big portion of this we write of seventeen one oh two. And without it, decision on my part at least.
Anybody online? Okay, well, with that in mind, if that's a, if that's kind of a, something you're sent, do not have to go on. I'll use my own little phrase. How do we want to message around that in terms of next steps?
I do want to do a continuance on it.
I think that has to come from
But we could also say that we, we could give her an opportunity.
Open recording?
Open the record and ask, would she prefer a continuance or denial and then come back?
Okay. Um, Missy, we have opened the record before.
Okay.
It seems like Bill has suggested it isn't the best practice, but we have done it with him in the room or on the computer. And I'm comfortable with that unless it sets a precedent that we just don't want to repeat for more controversial items. Cause I don't think we're in a controversial position tonight, but we have been before with the record and it was not accepted, wasn't received well, that we wouldn't open it again.
Right, so, uh, I was tracking uh, the record closed, the public hearing closed and the planning commission moved into deliberations. Now, the, you, what you're wanting to do is give the applicant the opportunity to ask to have either the public hearing continued or the record remain open for twenty-one days or whatever.
Right.
It, it's true. I agree with Bill. It's not the greatest idea because you've moved into deliberations, but I don't actually see a huge problem with it. Other option is an approval with a condition that requires a mitigation plan to be presented to the planning commission at a later time. That would likely need to be presented also at a planning commission hearing. But the, this phase of the condition use permit process would, you know, move forward. So it would be an approval with that condition to be satisfied at a later time.
But it would be just a tentative approval because if we did approve the mitigation plan.
You, what you would do is you would have a public hearing to approve the mitigation, to consider and approve the mitigation plan at a separate, at a separate
Right.
process, which I will say doesn't give a lot of comfort to applicants because they still have to get back. So I, I think that that would be acceptable to reopen the public hearing and consider a request to leave the record open.
Okay.
I think that's probably the best course.
You guys here? Jay, Mickey, that's okay.
Yeah.
Uh, online? Les, Steve, Aaron?
I, I have no problem with that.
Sounding good. Um, okay, then we'll, we'll go ahead and do that. So we're going to open the record, which means we can take additional testimony. And, um, what we're considering now is uh, the best way to, for you to move ahead with confidence that short of just this one item, which is pretty important to us. We need, we need that item. So we want to give you the option of saying, uh, whether you would prefer us to deny what you have in front of us tonight and, and message to you that it is for this very specific reason. Or you would like to hold the record open, which means we make no decision tonight and allow you additional time to have your specialist prepare what we're missing. And then we will consider it at that time.
That sounds good.
You prefer the latter?
Yes, please.
Okay. Yeah, you're welcome.
Uh, Chair, can I ask a clarifying question? So the, the list that I jotted down that you referenced is seventeen one oh two oh seven oh J. And then there was also seventeen one oh two oh six oh
H.
H.
H and F.
H and F.
Yes.
Okay. And can those email so that
They're in our useful code.
Okay, cool.
Actually, could you repeat those?
I've got one oh two oh six oh eight.
Okay.
One oh two oh seven oh J.
Okay. We can get those to you as well.
Okay, thank you. Is that something that the wetland specialist that already ordered?
Yes. Specifically.
Yes, okay, Anita. Yes, thank you. Okay, good. Same person.
No.
Excellent.
She'll be able to take care of it for you.
Okay, yeah, she's fabulous. I love her very much. So I'm, I'm confident that she'll do a great job.
Good. We are too. Actually, I, I assume that I, I hear she's good. I standing by. I have to be so careful with my words. Anyway, we, um, um, generally like the project. It just doesn't meet our requirements now. So thank you for giving us a little additional guidance on the best way for us to move forward. And, um, unless you have something further, we'll go ahead and close the record again and move back to our deliberation.
That's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure we typically, when we continue, we've got to have a date certain. So we do that at our next meeting, which is on April twenty-fourth.
Okay.
That's enough time, right?
Excuse me, Chair, which will be not in this location?
Right.
Oh, yeah, good point.
Yep, yep. And, and so we will, uh, we are going to touch base on that and we can let, um, uh, Ms. Miller know that. And so, uh, what we can send an email with regards to, and everyone else. Actually, the meeting's going to be at the Chamber of Commerce. I'll just say it right now, uh, two oh seven North Spruce Street. The, the, uh, people that are participating online should be aware that a, a new notice is not sent out. So we're telling you at the meeting right now that the meeting is being continued and that if you choose to participate again, the meeting will be on April twenty-fourth, uh, two thousand twenty-five at the Chamber of Commerce or on Zoom, just so everyone's aware of that.
Okay, thank you. We need a motion?
I, yeah, I had one comment.
Oh, sure. Please do. Uh, go ahead.
Will you see the date of July first, uh, is the hundred and twenty days to approve or deny this permit? And that doesn't, I just want to clarify that that doesn't move that date with this, uh, with this motion.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Steve's got.
And that's just always an important date to remember because, you know, we're always getting close whether things get appealed to counsel and different things like that. So I think it's real important on the applicant's part and on the planning commission's part that we make a decision at that meeting.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Um, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, it's like this is, this is Les if you've got a minute.
Are you, Les?
Um, so I'm, first of all, thank you, Ms. Miller. I, I, I really appreciate the spirit that you've approached us with. Uh, I think you did frankly, an outstanding job of trying to understand our requirements and, and satisfy us. I had a couple of questions and I just, I just really want to talk about it with the group. I don't consider them deal killers in my mind. Uh, they're really revolve around two things that I really couldn't understand. One was the stormwater, uh, mitigation plan. Um, I, I really couldn't understand the expert, uh, stuff that was in the packet. I did understand, uh, what the staff report said. And I wondered, I was a little concerned that this might turn the, the stormwater runoff into a point source. And I wanted some assurance or at least to understand from others whether that was not a realistic concern.
What do you consider, what do you consider point source?
Me personally, it, it sounds like it's the open end of, of a single pipe.
Uh huh.
And, and so this, this is all the drainage collected goes into a, uh, some kind of a rock filled uh, French drain. But there seem to be some suggestions that at certain, at, at certain, some certain point that would be saturated and it would, the water would just overflow maybe at a big rain event. I, I'm not sure. I just, I have, you know, I don't, I only have limited experience, but in our other wetland discussions, I don't recall we ever discussed handling stormwater runoff in quite the same way. Is that about, I mean, does anybody share that concern? Uh, if not, I, I can waive it.
Well, Les, looking at the design of it, it's, it's um, very similar to um, a standard dry well where it collects through, uh, and through and flows through a cemetery, uh, filter at the bottom, sand filter, and then disperses naturally through the, through the soils. Um, as far as the overflow, I think that is about concern being, um, at what point will that happen though? I, I feel that the um, our management plan will address that on multiple different levels, um, between they went through many different scenarios. Existing conditions, I think there is a five year
I think it's a five year, seven inch.
Yeah, five year, seven inch. So, and so I think at least on my side, I think it's addressed enough, um, at least in that, in, in regards to stormwater management plan.
My, my only concern would be that it's, uh, you know, strategically placed and I assume that that will be done. Uh, I, I hope that's a safe assumption.
That's the other thing that's sort of lacking in the site plan is it does call out a location for it, but, um, looking at the site plan S one hundred, um, is really not defined and neither is parking. So, um, I would encourage the applicant to improve on that as well.
All right. Go ahead.
I had a question about, uh, the, the riprap wall and whether the infiltration system was going to replace part or all of that, or if that riprap wall was going to be replaced. Uh, and if so, with what?
Steve, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm following what
There is an existing riprap wall that was part of the, uh, temporary water control, uh, or maybe a, a make do infiltration system that's currently on the property. I don't know if that will be disturbed, but that's my question.
You can see in those exhibit A five, second page of images. Um, and then there is lacking information on foundation, at least other than pure foundation as stated in the geological report. And, and, um, what needs for the post, so.
Given what you said earlier, though, that's kind of lowers, lower priority concern for you.
Um, yeah, well, how it's going to stand up, yes, but the impact to the site, or how it's going to stand up, no, but the impact to the site of those fittings and foundation walls and such, yes.
I see.
Um, and that's sort of along the same lines as being brought up on this riprap wall that's existing there. Is that to remain? Is that, are we going to pull that? I can't see necessarily we need construction details, but maybe further information and some sort of narrative would be helpful to understand.
The narrative now is that that riprap wall has been undercut a little bit by erosion. And so it also says that it was going to be temporary and I'd like some more detail on that. But the other thing is that, uh, it, it states in the, uh, report that there will be, uh, dirt or soil placed underneath the home, uh, where it's elevated in order to allow vegetation to grow. And I wondered if that was going to be all the way under the home or if we're looking at some kind of fill or three quarter minus underneath the home or exactly where are we looking at to, uh, where's the border on the dirt versus any fill that might be underneath the house? Or if it's going to be all dirt underneath the home, what that might look like?
Any other questions? So just quickly, I'm sorry, did I cut someone off? Um, great questions, uh, questions we can't get answered right now with a closed record. And I'm not inclined to open it again.
We could just
But those are on our minds, top of mind.
Yeah.
When we do have the applicant up or the applicant's representative, I think it's really important for us as a body to be asking these question, types of questions just to, because then we can get those answers. Okay, anything else from anybody? Top of mind.
I might add a
Oh, I'm sorry. So I wish you could, we close, close the record.
I was going to keep you sitting inside.
We will
Drainage problem.
When we come back to, uh, when we come back, uh, next month, there'll be an opportunity to speak. Um, okay. Given, uh, what we've talked about tonight, may, may I have a, a motion?
I move that we continue this matter until the April twenty-fourth planning commission meeting.
Just a second? Any further discussion?
Do we confirm that's enough time for the applicant to have the report made?
We did not confirm that. Thirty, I, I don't, I didn't count how many days that is, but go ahead.
My suggestion would be that we have it at that meeting and the applicant be responsible for, for getting that information as soon as possible to us because again, we have the hundred and twenty day clock that we're working with. So it's important for them to get that information to us in a timely fashion.
Yeah. Uh, so short answer is no, Aaron, but we're going to blaze ahead is kind of what I'm hearing. Okay, so, uh, we had a second. Any further discussion? Uh, Tessa, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Orloff.
Yes.
Commissioner Bates.
Yes.
Commissioner Matusik.
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Chair Nathan.
Yes. This item is continued to our next meeting, which again is held at the Chamber of Commerce. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, so just wanted to again indicate that the, uh, neighbors will not receive notice of the meeting. So we're telling you now for everyone who's in attendance and, and online. And, um, Ms. Miller and, and I would look for concurrence if someone would like to do that. But I'm guessing not only do we want that narrative, but potentially to have that person available to speak to questions. Should you not be able to answer them? And you might have questions of the person putting the report. I would recommend that they be available on Zoom or in person to participate.
Okay. So, um, we'll move ahead, but you know what? Let's take a, let's take a two minute break before we move to just these last couple of items.
Call our meeting back to order.
We'll move on to our next item, which is the tree report. Here we have the just one moment. Just one moment.
January, a total of four trees were removed. Um, all four were hazard trees and a replanting requirement for moving to February. A total of twelve, all twelve were hazardous and the replanting requirement is for seven. The tree, the property that did not have a replanting requirement on Logan Lane has a significant number of trees on it already and there was no need, density requirement uh to require additional replanting on that property.
Questions about the tree report?
Yeah, I, this is Mike. Um, I just wondered, it said they were all hazardous trees. What was that about on Logan Lane that is?
I'd have to go back and, and for example, or.
Uh, yeah, if you could send me an email after the fact.
Yeah, I can, I can send that over to you.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions about the tree report? Okay, let's move to the uh good of the order. Anyone have anything for the good of the order? If no one else does, I have a couple of things I wanted to uh touch on. One, I, I'd like to understand um your role a little better. Um, that wasn't initially on, on my mind as we sat down here tonight, but I think it's, I think it ties into some things that are on my mind. So as we've made this transition um with you here with us, which I'm, it's so nice to have you here. Um, in real time, um, love Bill. Uh, you know, we had a couple glitches with, with Zoom, but it was generally pretty good. But I do think it's, it's great when you're here. How, how is your firm looking at having your presence here? What was, what was the change there?
Oh, it's uh less, less technically complicated than you would think. Um, well, it's spring break. My husband and I and my son are vacationing for spring break down in Manzanita. Bill and I thought it was a great time for me to meet all of you since it was just a little twenty minute drive.
Got it, got it.
Um, but we do spend a lot of time in Manzanita and we will be soon in the future.
Okay.
And uh, it's really nice to be able to get out here for meetings. It's a lot easier when the weather's not bad and it's summer and it's late a lot later. Um, so I think that's what you're asking. Do I understand?
Uh, you did, yes. And I'm going to lead to a larger question, um, which maybe a structural question, Stephen, I touched on this a little bit. So um, and by the way, you know, when it's not nice weather, Zoom is great. That works too. So it don't feel like, we're like, oh, really? No, not at all. We're, we're glad to have counsel here anytime or any way you can. It does lead, uh, my question does lead to kind of a larger question. I, Bill and, or Stephen, I talked a little bit about this. We just had an application before and it's not the only application where what I'm going to talk about now has come up, but it's just the most recent. It was the Seagulls Rip Rap, uh, application to um install rip rap. It was appealed, our decision to deny was appealed to city council and.
Is this what the, I'm wondering offhand, could we maybe talk maybe more generally about the application instead of like maybe the specific application, but maybe the concern.
Bad idea, not a bad idea. I don't, I don't.
Because we may see things and we don't want to have discussion as part of an application that's not before us. So I think yeah, I think we want to keep it general and I think we can speak to it that.
I think we can. Uh, there have been applications um over my tenure on the planning commission where um it would have been helpful to have a constant through line with council. For example, there will be times where Bill might be in the room or on Zoom and Carrie is there at another time. And if we have a closed record, for example, there is the opportunity if uh council um hasn't been consistent for that, for new testimony to come into that closed record. And so in thinking about um having you with here tonight, I didn't know what the plan was. But in my mind, I'm thinking, what a great idea if, and I, I'm not saying this is what you guys had in mind or the city has said this is, or budgeted for that matter for this, but it would be a great idea to have you follow anything that we rule on through the city council. So there is that consistency because there have been instances where plans have changed, new information has been submitted uh in a closed record. Um, just any number of, of instances where, you know, most of the time it's not a big deal. But in a couple of instances, one in particular, this was many years ago, where the plans were actually changed. What the city council thought they were approving was not what was built. And whether it was nefarious or, or what, an accident, we'll never know. But because of that lack of a consistent through line, it was missed, which leads me, so I guess to kind of put a, a, a bookend on that thought. I think it would be great if you were able to follow these uh through and we had you, the city council, planning commission had you all the way through. It would, I think it would protect us from some, some areas that we've have the room for improvement on. Just an idea, we can come back to it. Um, I would also like to better understand our record and how records are kept. What is the standard? How, we, we have these eight hundred page records. You know, it's, it's an enormous amount of information to look through and then it gets changed. And it's, you know, if we do a, if we do a, uh, an, an extension, I'm blanking on the word now. You know, there's another opportunity for more information, sometimes the same information or sometimes the same information slightly modified to be put in there. And now it's eight hundred, the first time we read it and it's eight hundred again, if we're looking for every time that there might be something new put into the record. I would like to, I would like to, one, better understand our process behind the record. And two, talk about how do we get this to the point where we don't have to look or protect ourselves from having to read every page every time because it's just not feasible. And um again, whether by design or just an accident, there have been instances where those, where those, where that information has changed. So maybe not for tonight, but I do think it's important for this body and maybe with, with the other bodies as well to have this conversation around how is our record built? How, how is it presented to us, to city council? How is new information brought in? And I know you're frustrated with it, you guys, you know, the bandwidth for all, that you have all in front of you for new information with all you have in front of you otherwise. It's, it's got to be just a heavy burden. But I do think it's worth a conversation with some, with um all of us. There's some bright minds in here and we can, we can really tighten the ship up because there is there's a having watched um over the years, a number of these processes go through, there's just some places where, where we need to tighten up a little bit.
Comment a little bit.
Go ahead, please.
You know, first of all, comment on the one item that was out there where um I as a staff person didn't make an error. So that's just in, in, in one of the matters. So that was my fault. Um, as far as the rest of it, um, it's probably something that maybe we can just sit as a staff with the attorney, not, not excluding anyone, but also coming up maybe with a better plan in terms of how a record should be maintained. I know Robert and I have that discussion. I know he does a nice job of collecting it and putting it in, in exhibits. Then I get it and I change it a little bit. And so there have, we have to talk a little bit amongst ourselves as to how we can better have the exhibits in the, in, in another matter, we collected that and we just did it A through Z and we kept adding the exhibits, the new ones. Um, oftentimes if something gets appealed to Luba, there's a specific record. And, and uh you guys as the attorney may have a, a method that you might say, hey, here's what we might recommend. So it may be with regards to record, not trying to keep plan commission out of it and we could always come back, but I think it would be best if staff maybe had an ability to do some discussion and then bring back some information back to you in terms of, hey, here's some of the discussions we've had, here's how we think we can maybe improve on it. Um, throughout from plant, you know, from development permit to the plan commission to council and how to best do that. Um, I don't know that there's a lot really that the plan commission needs to do other than have staff go look at it, try to uh figure it out in the best manner. And then maybe come back with you saying, hey, here's how it's been done, but here's how we think we could improve it and make it better.
Great.
Just drawing from my industry, uh typically new information is treated as an addendum. And you know, possibly any new information that's added to records is literally labeled as an addendum so that we know exactly what the new information is and we don't have to go through those eight hundred pages and we can, we can refer back to the eight hundred pages if we need to.
Right. I think it's, I think it's a great point. And this, this will come back to you guys when you, when you come back to us. I think voicing where we do have our challenges as, as planning commission members. Um, you know, we have that initial application that comes in and says exhibit A to E. If, if I knew for sure exhibit A to E were stuff I had already looked at a hundred percent, there was nothing new, exhibit A hadn't been swapped out, then I could just move forward for me.
And I think that is already done when we list exhibits the, uh, uh, as far as in front of plan commission.
Yeah, the numbers don't change.
Yeah.
I think except when we jump from planning commission to council, then.
That's, that's been the biggest change as far as like probably from a staff perspective, and that's partially on me, is to be more consistent in terms of maybe following through with how the exhibits were laid out at plan commission. And then having them similarly uh, uh, continuing a similar pattern as far as exhibits instead of maybe changing some things that way. But also, it, it also depends on if something's on the record. Is it um, uh, de novo where now new evidence is, you know, I think what we're talking about is mostly on the record stuff because at a de novo hearing, then anything new can just be submitted at that point in time. So I think, um, I think there's some things that we can look at as a staff to potentially make things better and easier to understand.
Along the lines, and I do think it's a good idea to have that consistency come from planning commission to city council, but along the lines of what you just said. I think it's also important that the planning commission be kept up on what's happening after they leave our desk, if you will. So that if there is a, a request for de novo or it's appealed or whatever happens, we can look at those decisions and go, okay. City council didn't agree with us for these reasons and we need to think about that in our own decision. Or city council missed this, how can we make sure they don't miss that again?
I think that's the findings of fact that are the document that are both produced by yourselves as well as council. And the council, just because something goes to council, yes, they, they can use the facts that have been decided by the plan commission. But then again, they could maybe disagree and create their own findings as to why they're changing a decision.
That might, that might be helpful for us to, to know or to hear, hey, they didn't agree with your findings of fact. I think it will make us better. Um, you know, hearing something like Taluba. Uh, there's an issue we, I, I'd like to get an update to the planning commission tonight that, Missy, you might not be able to sit around for. I, I save that for last just for you so you couldn't have to wonder when you could come back in the room.
I can give a little explanation of those rules too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Uh, I can't uh represent the city at all in the um dispute that's known as Roberts versus the city of Cannon Beach. But, and the reason is because I was a decision maker in that application, which I think has uh gone up and down to the book possibly twice now. And so the, the Oregon rules of professional conduct just prohibit me from representing the city in that matter.
Sure.
At all, which is why I prefer to just go get a drink of water while you're talking about it.
Sure. Well, I didn't realize you were going to be here tonight.
I know.
Or it would have been a lot easier. I thought, well, we'll just ask that at the end and it'll make it easy to check out.
So can I actually, I do want to just weigh in on one thing that you said. Um, I mean, uh, this, this is what I would call a high functioning planning commission. And so you read everything that's put in front of you, which is great. Um, the records that you're seeing are not atypical at all. Uh, the records that I saw at Luba from all over the state are hugely increased from when I started in two thousand and six to today. Uh, part of that is just a function of our increasingly litigious system. And also it's a function of the fact that state law places the burden of proof on an applicant. And so, so for example, the applicant that approves a rebuttable presumption that an application should be approved and that the local government should find a reason to, to not approve it, right? And that means an applicant has to come in with all, everything that they can um in order to overcome, to satisfy that burden of proof. And, and it's just, that's just, you know, the, the way that it is all over the state. Um, so I think that's all I wanted to respond to on that, which is that they are long and they are difficult to keep track of. And, and local governments have a heck of a time, you know, managing all of this paper that comes in. There's, there's no local government that I saw that has a really good system. I think Deschutes County is probably the best local government that was an early adopter of electronic records. And so they were able to, you know, put them into their system and really, you know, categorize them. And so um you might have some luck if you're involved in the um league of urban cities. They might have some good help when you talk about.
Sure.
But it is, it is a hard, hard paper management.
Yeah.
System.
Yeah, for sure. And it's like you said, it's the world we live in, you have to do that. There's been, you know, one percent of the time, I thought we were getting intentionally buried so we wouldn't catch something. But most of the time it just is the world we, we work in. I, I, I get that.
Yeah, most applicants just come in and they want to get their application approved and they're, they're trying hard to get it approved and not, you know, trying to not bury anything. I'm an optimist because I'm from some of the best.
You know, I don't want to dive too deep on this tonight, but there are a number of things that, that, that I've just kind of been thinking about. And because we have a little more time tonight, we, we have this, there are these times where we will get these letters. Uh, you know, four fifty nine or five fifty nine, um, and they're twelve pages long. Um, you know, the past position of your firm has been, they have to come in. Do you agree with that? Okay. So in terms of best practices, I guess we, we can talk about that um at some point in terms of what we want to do with it. Um, obviously it's in the record, so it's something we have to consider. Again, I, I, I don't think people, I think people are doing their best to get it done. There are a few times where I'm like, yeah, they don't want me to read this.
And will you remind me why that has to come in? Is that a state law or is that a, a policy, Cannon Beach policy? I assume it's a state law.
Uh, the scenario is that the cutoff time is five o'clock.
Well, the scenario is there's no cutoff time until we close the record.
Oh, right, then it's coming because the record is still open.
Right.
The reason.
Right.
Yes, which is one nine seven, seven nine seven, ORS one nine seven point seven nine seven. And possibly get the Cannon Beach municipal code, though I'm not as familiar with it yet as I should be.
Um, well, anyway, something to think about for us because I, I, those are tough to, to be nice on. It just feels and I remember when I was out in the audience, uh, just going, I'm doing my best and trying to get this in. So it does happen, but.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say, you know, like with um Tessa and Robert, you know, I think they get the material, Robert gets it into our packets, Tessa and Robert both send it out. We try to be as effective and efficient as we can to try to get you guys everything in a timely manner. And um from my perspective, I think these guys do a, a excellent job with that. And so what probably some of the things I need to do is just improve on the things that go from plan commission to council.
Yeah, I think, and I'll second that. This isn't a staff, a staff concern at all in terms of, of delivering documents. It is absolutely a, uh, just sometimes people can't get it done and once in a blue moon, someone's being tricky. Uh, in terms of uh, the, the second part of what you said, I, I would say that an education to us, just in terms of how you guys operate that so that we can understand
Sure.
how that information is, is being uh logged will help us better move through those applications. Um, and maybe just a few places where we um where we would be a part of changing and kind of a system just to streamline it in light of how big these things are getting. And, you know, let's face it, what we did twenty years ago in terms of logging this information has got to be different with these records as big as they are. in terms of logging this information has got to be different with these records as big as they are. It just isn't. I was kidding earlier, saying someone recently said something defective. I don't know how you guys sleep at night. Well, no, we don't. They're eight hundred pages long and then we're supposed to know the code on top of that. There's no sleep. So it, we have to have some sort of at a minimum, an understanding of how to put together so we can navigate more efficiently and then maybe we can tighten it up as a group or groups. So that we we just don't have the inevitable holes in our in our system that are going to happen when they get that big. So that's, I just wanted to put that out there to think about for you guys to maybe come back to us with and then maybe we meet as a larger group. Maybe it's when the bodies come together. But I do think it's a it's a great opportunity to improve our already, what was the word you used for highly functioning?
High functioning.
High functioning. Sometimes it doesn't feel like it. So that's kind of scary in terms of the rest.
I will say that the largest record I ever saw at Luba was sixty four thousand pages. If you're ever feeling really bad for yourself.
It'd be like that at the tree.
Yeah, it was like twenty seven volumes.
Anything else for the good of the order? Okay, well, thank you, especially Mike. I think you're probably in a whole nother time zone, so really appreciate y'all being here and the good conversations we have. Thank you. We'll adjourn at that.
Good night.
Good night.